Let's just unify of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and
Twenty years ago, I will call the meeting the order without a forum. That will take a motion to approve the agenda. Second, that's not all those favors on it, but both motion carries. Howie Engineer Rich, morning.
A lot for this morning, did make contact with John Dear. So I do have a purchase agreement ready to go for that, that motor grade that we want to do. I don't know if you guys wanna sign it or allow me, it's in the budget for equipment, so we'll pay. The plan I have set up with him right now is to pay him probably a hundred fifty thousand dollars on top of what we paid for rental. And paid him for paying off in July, so and they're okay with that, so. You guys are okay with it, I'll get it moving and get it taken care of when we're done with it, so.
Sounds good to me.
That's all I've got for you this morning. It's just a little bit about that corner. Oh yeah, so you had brought that up a little bit, uh, and I think what we might do, I think might be a good thing to do. The corner by the wastewater plant there always had a bunch of material, I think. I don't remember if some of that came when we, we even, I think some of those piles were there when we, when we got the road from the DOT and I think some of it came from when the casino and stuff was built out there. Um, it's been a nice sort of, I know, a while back, um. We gave some of the material away, we had, and now it's just kind of all junk and we had the landlord there would volunteer to kind of mow it for us if we cleaned it up. I thought, well, maybe it's a better idea to go, maybe we'll dig a hole and bury all the remaining chunks and whatever, then put some prairie grass in and clean it up that way, so.
He was pretty excited, some of those effects.
I think it'd be a good idea, uh, less maintenance for us, it gives it some, gives us a little bit of beautification and habitat, so. I think we might try to target that for sometime this summer work, they work with conservation earth, I know I'll get Mike Bodie on it, he'll go gangbusters on it, so.
And that's just in the right of way for it to.
Well.
Come right as you come in.
Yeah, the county owns that whole corner anyway, so it's in the, it's beyond the right of way, but in that wastewater treatment area.
So can we bury it in the right of way? Just my concern is if we bury it near that wastewater treatment plant? Are we ever have to add on to that or change something out there? Is that gonna be a problem later?
No, we should go there.
I thought we probably buried it right where it's at.
Okay.
Not moving any of this, and if we have some.
Oh, there's that much, okay, yeah.
It's way away from maybe two hundred.
Okay, I couldn't remember how much, how far away it was, you know, it'd just be an issue of all of a sudden we need the soils.
Oh.
Or something, if, if that was ever to expand in that direction.
Mm-hmm, we'll keep it away from, far away as we can.
Right, okay.
This would be.
Yeah, but if we have tall some material out. I think it's something to clean that corner up, it's kind of been, it had been a, a sore for years, it probably should just be done, so. Yeah, I think we might try to target that.
I think that's a good idea.
I didn't know that. Yep, so.
The only thing I had was I got a text about the dust. Well, it's a little dry out there, but he was trying to figure out why we got it packed down and then the grade would go by and scuffle it around. It's the same individual that complained about the snow removal.
Well, that there was enough about eight thousand people.
Well, up north than me.
Okay.
Anyway, I'd bring it, oh, I, you may, he wanted to be on the agenda for next week, so I'm just.
It does get duster.
Well, yes.
It does get duster when it, when it doesn't paint it, and sometimes we gotta blade the roads to, like this time of year, it's trying to pull material in and cut the shoulder grass, you know, just kind of bring that material in for use in the spring and.
And it takes a while to pack it back down?
It does, yeah. So I don't know if there's pockets, I guess.
I just thought I'd bring it to your attention and I. Cause I know last time you've got emails. Drainage, I didn't see any claims. So is Nate happening to be?
I don't see any.
Okay, maybe. Well. I'll take a motion to approve the claims. Second, I have a motion, a second, further discussion on, all in favor say aye, 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 opposed, and carries. Take most of the approval reports.
Claims.
And the claim. When I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, most carriers.
No reports. Salary change.
Who that on?
Maybe we should rotate tables, so we're all the same response.
Hey, Chad, work. That's the way you pronounce it.
Works on. Okay. Looking through the salary change.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on it, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. You hear any liquor cigarettes? Uh, disallowances for military and homestead exemptions? Those that no longer qualify? You want me to read this list or? What's that?
It doesn't.
I'll make.
Make a motion to approve the note or.
Well, sorry.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion on it, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Did you say that he was, is Nate happening to be on Zoom?
There was a Nate on it, I think that's.
Yeah, I think that's Nate Joseph, yeah, he was on. Okay. Uh, next we have Barbara and Truman Thron on a Sloopville property tax exemption denial appeal. I'll get you kind of up to date on this thing. We all got an email from her representing her parents that they're that this was being denied. And, uh, her, her problem with it is, is according to code. It states in code four twenty seven period one property exemption taxable. Applications for this exemption must be filed with the commissioner of the soil and water conservation district in which the property is located, not later than February first of the assessment year on forms provided by the Department of Revenue. Well, the form that's provided by the Department of Revenue says at the top, this application must be filed or postmarked to your local soil and water conservation district by February first. So her mother and father did everything kosher because they filled it out, they dated it January twenty sixth. They have, that was, they mailed it the next day, yeah, cause they live in Auburn Lee. It went through Minneapolis and it's postmarked at twenty seven, done in time. And then because Janelle down with conservation only works Tuesday, Wednesday. Thursday, when she left work on February second, they had not received it down there. When she came back to work on the seventh of February, she got it and immediately called the assessor's office and told them about it, and the assessor's office told them that it was too late. Janelle appealed this thing for Barbara and Truman Thron and then the assessor checked with the board of supervisors and because of the date on it, it was denied and she's appealing that denial. That according to what the state puts out, she did it kosher. It says it has to be postmarked by February first, so she's asking to appeal this thing. Now, any other thing that I didn't explain?
Well, and when it was brought to us, it was signed off by the soil conservation on two fourteen.
About two, sir.
No, two accept.
She might have got it on two seven, but she didn't sign off on.
They, it was, it did not get signed off till two fourteen and that's when she brought it up and we already had our assessment notices out and all of that.
So this is the only one out of, on the media.
And I know, um, Enes and I have been looking at that, it's with a little over four acres, four point three two.
Four point three two.
And, uh, we kind of calculated it really roughly and we're thinking it's less than eight, ten dollars in tax.
Right.
That would.
But what she's saying is, according to, and of course, then I called Eric and I said, so I said, the code says one thing. I said paperwork, the state of Iowa puts out says another thing, and he said, no, that's the one we use right now. So I s- and I guess it's been this way for. So.
Yes, cause we notified soil conservation way before it was like last fall and said you might want to get the forms out before, because we know, we knew that they just sent out copies of the forms and just have them sign it. Um, and we said we need those early because of the revale this year. And normally we do make exceptions and stuff, but.
Um, and Janelle did bring that to my attention.
Yeah.
That you guys had contacted her and she said, I made sure I got them there like a week or ten days before I was normally, but this one I did not have at that time.
So, I mean, it is what it is, I and I know I brought it in that one morning and talked to you guys and.
And the thing is, you guys shouldn't be making decisions without having a meeting.
I wasn't making any.
No, and they, yeah.
See, I don't remember it, cause I wasn't.
No.
It's, isn't it, your office does the actual, no, or?
We, we apply it.
Gotcha.
There, and, and like Enes and I were talking a while back. It really should be between the soil conservation and you guys. And I have stressed that for many years, that the two of you, the two boards need to get together and say, this is how, you know, if we're gonna implement it on our end, on the county level. Then they've got to be able to realize that we have deadlines too on our side.
Absolutely.
But.
And I guess, you know, if they did do it right.
They did it according to the sheet by the state of Iowa, yeah.
Yeah, they did it right.
I mean, we can't.
That's what they're complaining about right now. It does say down here that the soil and county soil and water conservation district chairman signs off on it, and then it says that the chairman of the Worth County Board of Supervisors signed off on, are we supposed to be signing off on these things every year?
We.
Cause these come out annually.
No, you have, no, I think Joan just puts in a blanket that they were all approved or something.
But how can you do that if it doesn't go through a board of supervisory meeting?
I think we've run something.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think Joan usually put it on the agenda and said, you know, but.
I haven't seen it.
Four years ago.
But again, and this was the project that I'm still working on, um, to do on, when I'm on my downtime. But again, this does really truly fall on you guys, because every year you should be designating certain areas for the Sloop Bill. And it's not, I, I, I finally found an ordinance and I'll get that out and, and, or send that to you guys, that you guys had put up or not you guys, but the board of supervisors many years ago of the process. Um, also in that process, I found out that even people in the city limits of all the towns should not be coming through you guys at all, that needs to go to the city councils and it's never been. And, and we have, we've got quite a few, more than I realized, that are in different cities that have Sloopville. Um, and I guess that's fine, but I think we all need to get on the same page that one, is it really slew? Two, who is checking those out? I know I've called well, C and I called them a few times, yes, and said, they're mowing this, this is part of their lawn, it's not slew anymore. And they followed up with the landowner and sure enough, they said, yeah, they hadn't had Sloop there for a few years.
Eric did say he checks quite a few of them.
Okay.
So, and the other thing that he brought to my attention off this code. He said, down at the bottom of your B, it says that the commissioner certified that the property is eligible and that would be those commissioners. The application shall be reported to the board of supervisors on May first of that assessment year. The certificate issue, certificate of eligible, they do this, so next today. For, but that's, yeah, according to code, it was wrong, but according to the form that the state of Iowa puts out, they did it according to just like it told them to do, and I don't doubt, I doubt very much that citizens go out and check code every time they go fill out.
You feel, you do what the form tells you.
You do what the form tells you, so.
But it was just one of those quirky things that with the revale for the year, we had to have assessment notices out by February ten. And then it wasn't even signed by their board until the fourteenth.
Which I didn't know, because it's wiped it out.
Uh-huh.
And I did ask about that, they pulled out the original down there and I didn't spot that, so. I didn't look hard.
No, that's okay.
But that's what this is about, on the agenda is they're appealing the decision and might, would like to be included in the that four point three two acres in the Sloopville.
I guess you, and Eric Butler says it is.
And Eric Butler says it is.
He's looked up.
He's looked. But it has been, they've had this every year, this is the first time they've run into that. Where that, it got held up by the post office, it got held up down there, it was a timing on when she worked and when she didn't work.
Well, and, and also too, you know, I, I realized that they did have a postmark and everything, I guess. So what if it was postmarked and then lost in the mail for a year? Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm just saying.
What point do you allow or?
And, so I mean, I'm not trying to sway you or, or disagree or anything, but I mean, then wait till the last minute.
Well, that was the other thing, they do, they do another page, and, and everybody knows what the mail's like today, but.
Yes.
And everybody knows it often works short, they wanna work two or three days these places and.
Yes. So if in the future then how do we, how do we change this? Because if the sheet's still gonna say the same thing, are we gonna deal with this every year?
Well, I think that conservation, we got and I'm willing to do that, get back in touch with conservation and say, hey, next year you gotta send a letter out with this. Here's what code says, here's what this thing says, get these things filled out and get them back to us. Because according to code, it's not right.
May not be this one.
That be the way to fix it?
But.
For year, they've gotta take it on and, and make sure people are aware of that, because, yeah, we could run into this again.
We, we need one deadline, not two.
Well, and that's when I thought, I asked Eric and I said, it's, and he said, no, the state's not looking at. So.
And it's not like it's hard work, I mean, they send out the maps and the forms and just say, sign it.
Yep.
And then.
Get it back.
To wait until the end, but, yeah, cause I, I think Janelle said she sent them out in October.
I would imagine, yeah, cause I just got something similar to that, where I can have it signed and back by, um, whatever date it is, but something, you gotta get it done right.
It's no different than your utility bill, it's new to the town, you pay at the tent. I get it, some people pay it right away, some people wait till the deadline.
Yes, it's, so it's. So that's your call, I'm not sure what, what kind of, um, thing we would have to do from our end, because the assessment notices had already been sent out and everything applied.
Imagine being fit for it, maybe get a fix.
I.
Well, is, is there anybody out there still that the board of review is looking at as far as?
They don't look at land. Cause we looked at that too, thinking that they could go to board review. But they really don't look at the land swing part or egg.
Yeah, it's just code says one thing and the forms just suck, no. And it's not worth counting, to then do it. No, we have to agree to it.
And I know Enes put a lot of hours in there trying to figure out, excuse me, taxes, what it would be, what it would affect the taxes and stuff and. I always did a, a rounded out of the blue kind of thing and it usually comes pretty darn close, so it's anywhere from eight to ten dollars.
Make a reply for this again next year, is it great?
It's a yearly deal, it's not like the forest reserve, it's not like the forest reserve, it's done once. And it's like forest, this is forest cover under the Sloop Bill and it's done every year, you gotta apply for it.
And there are other things too, if they just wanna sign up, I think, once for other conservation things that this wouldn't have to be done every year. I mean, there's, yes, there's conservation prairie, there's, yeah, all of those different things.
And, and that was one of the things I said to Eric, I said, really, they should get it out of forest cover and stick it in forest reserves. And he said, well, the state of Iowa is trying to feel that now, so I said, that's not the way to go.
See, yeah.
But that would be smarter, cause you'd do it just once, wouldn't have to worry about it. But.
Or, or just even other conservation programs that they have out there.
Those will be true.
Yeah.
More permanent.
But at the present time, she's appealing our decision, because as far as she's concerned, her parents did it right. All the information I got, are they on Zoom? Oh, okay, would they like to speak, say?
Uh, Mary is on Zoom, Mary, would you like to say anything? I'm not seeing a response.
You.
Um.
What's that? Yeah, that's.
Yeah. Mary says she's trying to unmute.
So any other questions?
Hello, I'm here.
Hey, Mary.
Hello, thank you so much for hearing this case. Um, and I'm sorry, I was a little surprised with the agenda that we're already to my point, so I wasn't really ready. But, uh, yes, uh, we are just so thankful for you to reconsider this issue, it seems like while my mother was very late in responding and we have the documentation we found this weekend where she was notified by Janelle last November, she didn't respond until January. But, um, we, we think maybe that this response getting back in time with the postmark being before February first maybe slipped through the cracks somehow.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna see.
And you know, this is, this has been, um, a long time coming, I know, because of the sort of the lapse of time of understanding what's involved at the, an appeal and, uh, what's involved in getting on the board of supervisors, that Janelle told me she thought she could appeal it and she reached out to the assessor's office. And then when the assessor's office told her that it had, the appeal had been rejected, that's when I asked if I could appeal to you all directly. And, um, I was going to write a letter, so I called the auditor's office and I spoke with the auditor um, who said that she had not seen the appeal on your agenda before. I think that's accurate.
It wasn't on there.
So perhaps you haven't seen this appeal in order to reject it before?
We've seen it, but we haven't, it's not been on the agenda, and we haven't thought about it all, I mean, what to do, so this is the first time we're talking about it.
Okay, so it's the first time that you're making a decision, so maybe it was erroneous that the assessors would tell Janelle that the, the, um, board of supervisors had rejected it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I know it's very late in the year, it's May first and it has just, you know, kind of gone back and forth lingering and unfortunately um, none of my parents' children, as we are in our seventies, are in the area, so we're dealing with this kind of out of state and with copies of papers flying around and I'm really sorry, my, my parents are both with it at both eighty-eight and eighty-nine and we're lucky to have them, but this, uh, did go by my mother until the last minute.
It was postmarked, it was done, I think we just give it to them, that's my suggestion.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
Your second, divide. Well, sorry, I got a motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, aye. Motion carries.
I thank you very much and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, are you Nate?
I'm Nate.
Good to meet you, Nate.
I salute you guys too, uh, so I'm late.
Nope.
I mean, that's, and that's Mark.
It seems like if I gotta drive three hours, I'm an hour early, I gotta drive an hour fifteen minutes, I'm fifteen minutes late, so. But, uh, yeah. So the spray in this year, I know that, uh, one of the ditches that we worked on last year, we got a little time on it yet that hasn't been built, I think it's a lat H two or whatever it is here. From last year, yeah, and there's like actually went around that section where that, or this section that ditch goes through and it's in pretty rough shape, it's got a lot of beaver dams in it and I don't know if there had been trees, larger trees taken off from it in the past and then willows had grown up. And there's still a section that's like, needs cut out yet, but I think, uh, I was told that it's gonna get cleaned out probably, so, yeah, okay, so that, we'll just like, let that settle for now and then we got a rotation digits from twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty that'll be due this year that are kind of in this area, just to the east of town and stuff like that and all the bids pretty much like the quotes stay the same and we always just come in under that like quite a bit, so. I guess my only question is if there's any cleanings gonna be done on any of those that we need to be aware of or?
The only one I spotted was D D two, two and. Have you sprayed and then come back?
Right.
Six days later. Right. Yes, we're taking. Now got ahold of Jacob and he said, I don't think any of that areas, you said was gonna be doubled up on there, so.
D D two, we're taking out a lot of big trees.
Okay.
Certain areas, so that might sit for a couple of years too, until they start, I think starts to come back and then, then hit that portion.
Okay.
See what happens there for now, but, yeah.
I had to add ten, cause that one was.
Yeah.
A year ago.
Twenty-one. Yeah, it would have been in twenty-one, we got the upper and then the last and then nine, I think you told me that eight, but I couldn't find the last eight on there anywhere on all my records. Yeah.
Those were some.
Yeah, I know, there's a couple lats up there, but yeah.
Yeah.
Probably seven.
Yeah.
Sure, once you get up there and go.
Yeah, yeah. There must be, there's some, uh, must be some bigger trees on that.
There was.
There was.
They were all cut off and then I talked to your dad about it, uh, right after we cut them off that first spring and he said, I'd like to see a little more regrowth before we do it.
Yeah, cause like on my map, I got, he usually just scribbled out in red as like a no spray, but if they're all cleaned up, then we'll just treat it as well.
It'd be everything north of one hundred. Eight thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Black time, it runs up past, we have a road and then it also goes back up to the northwest.
Yep.
There's a lateral order it is up that way.
Yeah, that'd be nine, I believe.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was all cut out of there.
Okay.
Stumps for left, but I just wanted to thought the guys did, that's what we did.
Okay.
So. We didn't do it, we shaved it, so we left the stumps, we wanted to shave the whole bank.
And I know they cleared the right of way. And I know they cleared the right away on the way on the upper in the D D ten, they took everything that would be in the, or a right away. Sure that's going back to, you know. Yeah. No, it looks good.
Yeah.
We don't have major one we got going on, the trees. There'll be another one next year, we're gonna make sure to get them listed when they. Get all those cut off and. They're all coming out, but, um, that's gonna start disturbing the little trees. So we can get on a spray list.
Any ten with big trees, it's just a seed bed pretty much.
Good time to get after the little guys, okay, no, so we just.
Good meeting you, sir. Glad you're taking it though.
Yes.
We're gonna try, I mean.
I always like to joke, but you know, the twelve foot of office spaces is a real challenge, the rest of the stuff, all size stuff is easy. We got some good guys and some guys have been there quite a while and some newer guys are pretty motivated, so that's good.
Alright, okay.
Yeah.
I'll pick, I'll make the most to accept the twenty twenty-three brush weed control.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion on it, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post motion carries.
I'll let you guys know and the guys are gonna be up here and I usually, I think my dad usually always lets the chairman's department know if there's any. We're passing out there.
Guys are starting to get aware that we're doing. You're coming around second time.
Occasionally I'll run into a landowner and they're like, oh, there you go, trees out there, it's like, well. Anyways, thanks for getting it together.
Uh, next is resolution twenty twenty-six seven. Proving a bond purchase agreement for the sale of general obligation. Heidi?
Well, good morning. Um, I have in front of you the, uh. I have in front of you a sales summary today, uh, Dirk, what is the other resolution for you to accept the proposal? Um, to lock in the interest rates for the urban renewal bonds to finance. Um, the roads and bridges that you're putting there, the whole plan last fall. Um, so we've taken a lot of steps to get to this state, uh, going through multiple, uh, multiple hearings and. Last week went through the rating, you know, with the rating calls, uh. Just looking up here on the wall over here in two thousand nine, you, you had a rating of A, um, and. You were upgraded to an A plus, um, showing that the finances, uh, the board has been doing what Jackie has been doing. Um, to keep your fund balances. Level in having the cushions, the good management, um, kind of brought you here to the big debate. Uh, where we have a contract for you to lock in the interest rates of the eight-year bond. Um, I have a packet in front of you, just kind of go through the details, um. If there's any questions, let me know, then there's a contract to lock. First page, um. First page, just to talk a little bit about, um, the purpose and how this is financed over the eight years. On the weekends making payments and business for the year. It is a general obligation backed by the whole bunch of tax and authority, it's expected to be. Uh, there is an optional call date where the county can pay the last three years off early. Um, the interest, uh, rates will be locked in until that point. Uh, we did go over the finance plan a few weeks ago, early in April, we were, um, estimating a three point six one percent. Uh, went into the bond market last week and I have. Eight percent, um, very good, just straight, very pleased by it. You'll see that the par amount was reduced by three hundred thousand, the pages after this will explain that, um, in detail. Page three. Uh, so it shows the sources of the funds, so the county will be borrowing five point seven million. And receiving two hundred and ninety-seven, six ninety-six and change of reoffering premium. For a total amount of five million nine seven six ninety-six. Um, you'll notice that is just shy of that six million dollar amount, um. Bonds are sold in five thousand dollar increments, so if I increased it, five thousand, it would go over that six amount. Um, down below is how the uses of the funds will be used, um, the deposit. Says rounding amount, that's deposit to the construction fund, um, that will be used to fund the projects. And then the fees associated with it and legal financing and then there was, um, bond insurance included as well. Um, that totals that. Exhibit B is the pricing summary, um. You'll see, you know, going to the, um, left to right, um, you'll see. The maturities from twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-one. Two over, we show coupons and then we show the yield. So the yield is, um, the interest rate, um, that the county is receiving. But you'll notice, you know, we had that. Inch, uh, that premium, reoffering premium of two hundred and ninety-seven. Um, right now where the market is, um, investors are, um, interested in what, what is called a premium where they will pay. Pay you dollars upfront for a higher interest rate. So you'll see the coupon is the interest rate. But the net effect of what your investors are paying upfront for that almost three hundred thousand. That's the net effect of that yield or that yield column, um, you do notice that, um. We're in what is called an inverted yield curve right now with lower, uh, uh, short-term interest rates are higher than long-term interest rates. Um, you'll see that it goes from the yield goes from a three point two five to a three point oh eight. Um, then when you, uh, when we take into account all the costs of financing and the time. Uh, a more, um. I'll, I'll say it, uh. Um, it's a more, uh, upfront interest rate, taking it, taking into account everything with the cost. Um, you come up with that three point four seven seven here at the bottom. That was kind of a quick overview of what a premium is, but that's just that explanation of why that borrowing amount, uh, reduce, reduced. Exhibit C is the debt schedule, um, you'll see that, uh, it's has the. Eight years of payments through twenty thirty-one with the coupons and the interest rates here. Page five, those just the, uh, history of one-year bond interest rates, uh. Because the, uh. For, because the curve is inverted, uh, right now, you, you have that three point, uh, four eight percent, uh, averaging twenty years. Uh, are, are about three point five percent too, so, um, short-term rates are higher than. It's right now, but, um, went into the market, um. You had very good interest. The rating, uh, in your finances really helps facilitate, um, a very good. So very pleased with that. Um, we did have some, um, local bank, uh, buy into some of the bonds too, which was very pleasing. Um, and always facilitates a good, uh, market sale.
Make that a question to them?
No.
Yeah, well, these are tax exempt. But had the lower interest rates, uh, you know, uh. Since the county is well, well managed, that, you know, it's, this is the industry that you receive the most market today. Um, so very pleased, we've taken a while to get to this point. Um, I guess if there's next steps to talk about, um, you know, what we're looking at is. Um. Next week you'll have your final board action where, uh, Jackie will receive one more, uh. One more packet of items from Dorsey and that'll be the, the stack of loan documents for your signing on the dotted line, that'll be next week. And then closing is set for, I believe, May twenty-eighth. It's in the middle of the week, the board doesn't have to act, the board doesn't have to act on that thing. Twenty-four, yes.
There's no other questions for, I guess. Um, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. A resolution approving the bond purchase agreement for the sale of general obligation of renewal bond series twenty twenty-three A. Whereas the board of supervisors of Worth County, Iowa, there, here to the fore, proposed to enter an general obligation of renewal loans. Agreement and to issue general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed six million pursuant to provisions. Of subsection three thirty-one period four four one two B fourteen. Section three thirty-one period four oh two and section three thirty-one point four four two and chapter four oh three of the code of Iowa. For the purpose of paying the cost to the extent of undertaken aspects of Worth County Road Bridge and Culvert Improvement Projects. And urban renewal program of the county which is authorized by action of the board of supervisors in October seventeenth to twenty-two. In lieu of calling an election upon such proposal has published notice of the proposed action as held a hearing thereon. And as of March twenty-seven, twenty-three, no petition has been filed with the county. Asking that the question of entering in the loan agreement be submitted to the registered voters of the county and whereas a preliminary official statement had been prepared. Facilitate the sale of general obligation of renewal bonds, series twenty twenty-three A. To be issued in evidence of the county's obligation of the loan agreement and the county has made provisions for the approval. Of the POS and is authorized to choose by Northland Securities Incorporated. As underwriter of the issuance of bonds and whereas a certain bond purchase agreement. Has been prepared to set forth the terms of the bonds and the understanding between the county and the underwriter, there's now necessary to make provisions. For the approval of the bond purchase agreement now therefore be it resolved by the board of supervisors of Worth County, Iowa's follows section one. The bond purchase agreements hereby approved and substantially, the form is presented to this board of supervisors. The chairperson and the county auditor are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the bond purchase agreement to the underwriter. Section two, further action with respect to the issuance of the bonds and the approval of the loan agreement is hereby adjourned. To the next board of supervisors meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Section three, all resolutions and orders of parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this resolution. To the extent of such conflict are hereby repealed. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effective with meaning upon its adoption approval as provided by law. Is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen?
A motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
No, certainly.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call votes, maybe.
Right.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowbird, aye, resolution is duly adopted.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Heidi for showing up. Uh, I think there's one other one I gotta send, yes. Then, there you go.
So then should I still send one to Lowbird or will that? We'll send that, what was that, should I still send one?
I'll, I'll send it over and let her know.
And then there is a timestamp on there too.
So we're looking at. Yeah, nine fourteen.
Yeah, damn, hold on. Next on the agenda, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen. For twenty-two, twenty-three. In a bond transfer.
And that's just, it's simple, it's just, there was still nineteen hundred and some change that was left. Or that ended up in the mental health fund after July first. So, um, probably from tax sale or something like that, so we need to get that out of there so that can be. Yeah, just done.
Is that all it is, is just that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I will take a motion to approve resolution. Number twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, so.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion on it? Not hearing any. Roll call votes, maybe.
Alright.
Stone.
Aye.
Lowbird, aye. Resolution is duly adopted.
In love, this, it's been.
Yep.
Came up with anything for now?
I haven't any responses back yet, so I'll email them again.
Okay. Uh, Melissa, are you on?
Yep.
Got anything for us?
I'm just closing the ticket sales tonight at midnight for the, um, anniversary event. And then I will be at, um, C V N on Friday, um, and I always, uh, extend the invite if anybody wants to come with.
You come help me with the septic system Thursday and I'll go on Friday.
That's a hard pass.
Thanks for the offer, then I'll stay.
Alright.
Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, EMS. I talked to some township clerks this week. And, uh, I also, and then I. I talked to Silver Lake Township and they like Lake Mills, they want the option left there, that if they want to. Sign a twenty-eight E agreement with Northwood, that they might possibly do that down the road, but right now they still. Want to go that direction, I did talk to Fertile and they're more than happy like the mayor said that night with using for city. And then I checked with some of the other ones on how it broke down as far as how they broke it up on their budget and stuff like that. I did get ahold of, uh. Uh, Eric down in Mason City called me back. And I got him, he hadn't heard. Who had signed on with Northwood as of yet, so I got him up to date on the fact that the city of Northwood. And these six townships except for the town of Kansas had signed twenty-eight E agreements with. Northwood ambulance service starting July first. And he commented, he says, well, it, so it doesn't look like it's a county deal anymore. And I said. The three township, three and a half townships to our west and to the south are going to. Need to sign a twenty-eight E agreement with. Winnebago County, so I said basically graph them manly. And Lincoln and Union and half of Danville need to get together with you and sign a twenty-eight E agreement, he says, yes. We need to come down, work that out and. See what we can come up with as far as. Across and this kind of stuff, then I did mention to him about these, uh. Oh, the crossover between the, like, Northwood's ambulance and, uh. Mutual aid agreements, I said, uh, because. According to Blake, we need to have mutual aid agreements with these people and he said, yeah. And he said, he brought up to me the fact of they're not like services and I said, I agree totally with you. He said, where we send a paramedic out in the ambulance all the time. He said, sometimes you guys will always have an E M T in there and possibly a paramedic, so he said. There's gonna have to be a payment difference there and I said, so that is something you've got to work with the Northwood ambulance service. And then they would pay that bill and he said, yes, so then I called Blake and Blake says, yes, he says, I'm going down there to work. He says, I'm going down there to work that out with him and he says, I'm sure there's going to be a. A price factor in there where like when our ambulance, if both ambulances are out, we gotta call Mason City. To cover us or whatever, we're gonna have to. There's gonna have to be money exchanged because it's not using like services.
Right.
Which makes sense to me, so that would be, then that's something Northwood's just gonna have to take care of. But we need to basically. Uh, oh, and then the other thing, the reason I called him to start with. Was I wanted to know. How much Mason City ambulance was charging? The small towns and the townships. And he said, we're not charging the towns, the townships, anything at the present time, we do not think it's fair. To charge our townships or our. Small towns are charged when Worth County's not paying nothing. And I said, I agree with you totally, so I said down the road then when we figure this all out, I said, you're more than likely gonna go to the townships and stuff and he said, yeah. He said, then we'll have to cross that bridge then, so how they work that is there, you know, that. I, I just, I wanted to know what, how they were working it with those townships.
Kind of need to figure that out. You know, we, we got a year gap.
Right, and. I, the more I think about that. If we're going to give ARP money. For this. It should go to each township equally. Every township should collect on that. Those three and a half townships over here, with two and a half down there and plus the six up here.
Yep.
Should all collect the same amount of money. Because now Northwood not only has expenses, like you mentioned that one day, they might not get. Any revenue back for six to nine months, they've also. If they use that ambulance service are gonna, they gotta pay that bill. So. You know, and I don't, I know if you gave like. Like for instance, on the ones on the west, if you gave them twelve thousand dollars a piece, they'd have plenty of money to cover their forty thousand dollars.
Some of them don't even count.
What's that?
Some of them don't even. They just have little. Portionments that go out to the cemetery or whatever. There's gonna be some. We're gonna have to figure some stuff out and do that.
Well, that's my figure, there's a lot to figure out.
You kind of made my head start spinning. Yeah.
Well, like Deer Creek doesn't even, they don't even. Do the budget work. But I'm just thinking, if you're going to give the townships, and you know, when we were talking about premium pay, that was one of the things I heard about. Was it should be fair and everybody in the county should benefit off of it, it should be for all the citizens. Well, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna give ARP money, same way, everybody needs to benefit off it. And somebody asked me, they said, what about the towns? And I said, well, the towns already spent their ARP money, so I says, I'm going by just townships. You know? And that's just my idea when I'm looking at it.
But then if it comes from the county, isn't it technically benefiting all?
It is, yeah.
It benefits everybody.
Then that's. You're right, towns, townships.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, that's my theory. Yeah, it's coming from the township, towns and township. So. But that is. I just, you know, I don't have a problem with using ARP money. Because we gotta get over the hump. But we gotta renegotiate with Mason City, which Eric said, yeah, we need to talk. But we also got engaged Grafton and. Manley and like, well, like Tim said that night at the meeting, he said, we need to. It's, we need to go down there and talk to somebody. That's exactly pretty much what he said, right?
Well, yeah, and then, yeah, there's just so many unanswered questions with what, what's going on in the county right now. With ambulance services, it's.
And, and like.
All up in the air, so this first year is. Just gonna be a.
It's gonna be a mess with the pastor.
And, and like the July first deadline that you brought, brought up just in both of those. In, in that paper, in those, both those emails that Winnebago sent to us and. It says right in there, we would like you to consider, there's no date on it, no, no. And as long as we're working on it, we're considering it. So if they don't get it right away in July first, I'm sure they're not gonna have a problem with it if we can get it figured out. What's that?
We need, actually, because Blake hadn't been getting ahold of me, I got ahold of him a week and a half ago on two issues, one is we need to sit down with the CAD system. I got a meeting with him tomorrow morning with Marilyn. And we're gonna be talking about the CAD, Marilyn has found a few things that are gonna take a little bit longer in the CAD. Um, to get all this done, we walked, we asked for a two month minimum, they wanted to go July first, which we're gonna be just under that. Um, the second part of that, some of their people have not been certified on the radio system. Which I, they did get a class going, but I've requested their trainer, who's not a trainer that was trained by us, but was. Theoretically trained by somebody else, but I have not got any documentation to be able to accept that. So there's some issues, we're gonna be discussing tomorrow morning on how the radio operation's gonna happen, how the CAD system's gonna be happening. Because we've gotta have the two months to get that done. And right now, we're, we're the ones asking them, or we shouldn't be chasing them, they should be chasing us. So.
And I brought that up to him last night and he, he told me about that with the radios and that. He did mention to me that.
But we shouldn't be chasing them, they should be chasing us.
The county attorney has sent you the paperwork on the twenty eight East, as he's got them in.
On five.
Yep, who said the only one that you not have in this group, so you know what's going, what's gonna get changed.
But we have to have, when we sit down with him, there's some specific things, what units before we go in or we can't program until. We know what are gonna be designated, what units can be designated ambulance service, like we programmed in and that we haven't gotten, that's why I called this meeting. So Marilyn can get that information.
That's good, yeah, we got it. We s.
But I mean, this, they've got a follow up. Over here, it shouldn't be me chasing them now.
So, I agree with you. That's one of the reasons I got ahold of Blake last night was. I know that you needed two months and I wanted to know that you had the twenty eighty agreements and he brought up to me about the radios and. That kind of stuff, but we also gotta get. Down south, they've got to sit down with Mason City and have a discussion. Oh, that was one of the things Eric did bring up to me when I told him that Northwood and these six township were going with. North and ambulance. His comment was, ooh, wouldn't it be nice if they creep a little farther south? And I, and I, what's that? And I said, with my soul, I said, we're trying out, I said, they're taking their rescue area and not trying to. Fight off more than you can sure you are. So I said, right now, as far as I'm concerned, I'd really like to see. Lincoln Union. And, and if Kansas doesn't want to go this way, they're close enough, they're right on the township border anyway and have them cover that area and work out an agreement. So do we need to send an email to these people to say, hey?
As far as the trustee, you mean?
As the trustees and the mayors and the county city council.
Like Lincoln, how are they gonna pay for it? Cause they already maxed.
And that's what they've got to sit down and figure out, yeah, good point, but I mean, even if we, even if we pay for it with ARP money now. You've got to figure out something a year from now. Yeah.
Oh, ARP money will be gone after that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's a big.
Lincoln's just. For the fire part, there's still that twenty percent.
What's that?
Or that EMS. But I'm Lincoln. Lincoln is out on the fire.
No, Lincoln's maxed out at sixty and three quarter cents. There's forty and a half cents and then if that doesn't cover it, you get another twenty and a quarter, coming up with sixty and three quarter, they're maxed out. Question for you, aren't you the assistant party chief? Have you guys since this thing failed in November sat down as a fire company? And said, hey, we've maxed it out with the fire department, what can we do? To cut expenses and become more efficient, so we've got some money left over for ambulance, have you guys had that discussion?
We've, we talked with our trustees, we meet quarterly. Um, so we talked with our trustees and what we're gonna have to do to support ambulance service, so.
That's been rich.
We've had that discussion, um. Because, and that's what Danville, Lincoln and Union. Um, so, yeah, we've already started those discussions.
Good.
Cause we know what's coming. We just gotta try to figure out that the difficult part's gonna be with the city with, you know, they're only able to tax so much and.
And we.
And, yeah, obviously, we, we, we see a cut in our, our budget.
And there might be such a deal that you might have to form your own little district.
Maybe.
And there might be such deal that these three and a half townships over here might have to form their own district, it's not hard to do. And then they can go all the way to a dollar per thousand. Which is more than we had on the ballot in November. So.
That's a cost. It would be a lot easier, go countywide, huh?
Yeah, I, I mean. Well, you said at that time though, when I asked you, I said, how much is this? You said five hundred and twenty five thousand and we're not sure we got enough then, right?
It was gonna be close.
Yeah. So, doesn't do much good to start something and then we don't, we don't have enough money to finish it anyways. But, yeah, it's basically. It's a township, city type deal and somebody's got to start discussing some of this. And I got Eric up to date on it, so. He said, yeah, we'll have to sit down and. Discuss that.
Like say this, this first year being a. Big hoop to jump through, it's, oh, we don't foresee him changing up and it's gonna be for the following.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, alright, we just need to know from that two and a half townships and those towns, what the bill's gonna be.
I can tell you, we're not in the any. Cause you know, we're in a bad situation, but I just read the Charles City Paper and. Them in Floyd County, the company they have has moved from right at two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. And four hundred thirteen, four hundred thirty five, that's three years. But they're doubling. But they're gonna pay. So if you think this is over. Oh, it's gonna, it's gonna get a lot worse before it gets better, you know, so. But.
Well, and this is with Northwood not, not paying. Per se, I mean, if they have to pay people down the road, then.
How long's that gonna last until it becomes?
They're paying people in a stipend, but if they have to pay for. Twenty four, seven, three sixty five.
Which could happen now.
Which could happen. But I mean, Winnebago's kind of doing a little bit different and not coming up with, you know, it doesn't cost quite so much down there. But we also don't have twenty seven thousand people in a town to help pay for it either. You know?
Well, and they, they've got, they've got something established, they've been there for.
Yep.
Thirty years and. So they can, they can make it a, they can grow a little bit, make it easier than starting from ground zero.
Say a state step up on the red ones, money back to us from something.
Well, there's some legislation down there that says. Force spending can come back, stuff like this, we're all.
They got stores, whether it was fifty percent or you tell, you think.
There's over, there's around twenty million sitting.
It's good enough.
They're not out.
It's, it was how it's filed seven, ten, it went through the house, so it's up to the senate. On whether it goes any further, so. It's gonna be one of those where we want this, you want that. They're, they're here negotiating and some of them, they're available. So hopefully.
It's a good place to use.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It would be fantastic if they could help us out with that.
That's a nation. It's a rest.
You know, it's not going away, new, so, yeah, if you can get. The Manley mayor and the Grafton mayor and the city council, some of those people to get together with Eric.
Such a rural county.
Start pounding this thing out as to what they're thinking and where it's happening. Danville's pretty much split down the middle way, it looks to me on your maps. Yep, half of it's. Jackie's going left or, or Jackie's going east. Yep.
It's somebody.
Side Jackie. You're part of Mason City. I looked at the thing the other day. But anyway, that's what, that's basically all the updates I've got for you on.
Just don't get hurt.
EMS that I dug into this. And I didn't get as far as I want to, cause I got busy Thursday, Friday, so.
You're good.
I still gotta get ahold of Thomas. Do some work, but yeah, that's what we're at right now, we need. We need those two and a half townships and those three cities to. Cause a lot, what's that?
Then for ourselves.
Well, try to work out a deal so we know how much ARP money. We need to get over the hump here the first year and then also figure out how you're gonna do it down the road.
Yeah. This is short term bandage.
Yeah. Cause even like Northwood, and I've talked to Blake about that, I'd like to see at least from seven in the morning to nine at night, a paramedic on duty, period. Which means you're gonna have to tax for it. And I got no problem paying taxes for it.
But if they're within five minutes. Or whatever.
But, and I think that's fine too, I have no problem with the way they're doing it right now, we'll see how it works out. Cause they're gonna end up with three paramedics. And I don't know about the EMTs right now. I don't know if that school is over with or not, so.
Right, well.
That's all, that's the information I got on that anyway. Yeah, if you want to get ahold of those guys and set up a meeting.
Yep.
And I'll get ahold of Thomas, do some work there. So. Um, department had discussions. Anything, Dan, other than what you've already told us?
No, just two trucks for one. Got quite a little bit of damage from deer wreck and one with the windshield. It's plain as earth.
Anybody else?
Jason's got it, he's. Kind of holding off, waiting on bike racing to come down, but. Water main pipe is the only pipe that is not, yeah, everything else has been creeping now, I talked to him last week and said. Just get it off a bit. Let's get it, we're not gonna.
Finish by end of twenty four, right?
Six, I thought it.
But the pro, oh, no, yes, you're right. The project has to be declared by the end of twenty four and done by the end of twenty.
Last week too, that there's been discussion of uh, if you don't use it. It's hanging.
Oh, yeah, we're.
They're, they're really starting to talk about pulling it back.
So, give them somebody else.
You know? Cause that's a lot of other counties I've talked to that are, they've got a lot of earmark, they haven't spent the money yet. And they're starting to worry about, do we just start writing checks? Get it to those entities or where they're gonna put it, you know, and then when their project starts, they've got the money, so it's. It's not possible, the feds can't come and just take it back.
Yeah.
Hopefully doesn't, yeah.
We need to get information on all this stuff. So that's.
That is true.
Yeah. What else is new? Uh, Supervisors Weekly, the only thing I had was I got ahold of Kevin Springer. And he's still got the crack in the public health building on the agenda, the sidewalk and the flagpole stuff. I asked him if he could get us a bid or an estimate and he said, I can, but he said it's gonna be higher and I'll get out. And he said it'd be cheaper if we just do it labor material.
Uh, take a look on.
So I said, keep us, he's got us on the agenda.
He could get the polls for the. Watkins and.
Yeah, and he said, and he said Jerry Bachen is on in there. He's running into that one.
Okay.
Which is good, thank you, Jerry.
Because, yeah, the world they come from there.
Yep, so he's got all three of them on the agenda, so, but he's just gonna do them. Materialally, but I think that's, I'm fine with that one, yeah. Okay, that's all I had, other than dealing with the MS.
Well, so we, I had uh. Care Connections over in Nussburg, um. Just had to make some adjustments, found out the, our budget was off just a touch, but it was still a good hundred and sixty four thousand.
Good.
More coming in on revenues, we had to make some adjustments there and. So she's just not got that ready to go for the year. That was about the bulk of it, we're just budget stuff, everything's looking really, really good over there, Anna, um, who covers our area. Um, was over and gave a report and I told her we were very happy with what's going on, I haven't heard any complaints. When people call, they get answered or they get called back, they get direction, it's, it's going good, we're getting the seal, a lot more. Going on over here with mental health, it's been a good thing, so. And then I did talk with Jason, Peter, first Monday, um. The, that he's gonna get the. Water main project going for sure, and then we are going to get this. Uh, the water rates and stuff, um, I said, we gotta get this done like the next month. Let's get it, we've had that stuff for a little while now, so.
This wasn't some people's service.
Yeah, we got it, we got, we got a rate study from them, now we just gotta, we, Jason and I are gonna go meet with all the owners. Have discussion, get the number figured out. And then, cause we have to do a notice, um, like thirty days. That's an ordinance change technically throughout there, we may. We may put other stuff in that same ordinance change at the same time, because that ordinance is. Like a page and a half, it's pretty vague.
Yep.
So, so you change it.
Nearly.
Yeah. Yes.
That avoiding.
Yeah. Yep, so. So, yeah, so that hopefully within the next month here, we'll have that, at least to the point where we can publish it for a public hearing and then. Take effect. So after that, so. Uh, that's all I had.
And uh, just Iowa Workforce Development, uh, had a, the speakers on ahead of time, talking about the large underground power line. They take works from Mason City to Chicago. Coming up in the next few years, um, they were looking at sport. Our district and stuff, planning a letter of support for training and stuff, with the people probably working some of it through NIAC. Talked about, I think it'd be over, over nine hundred new. These long-term jobs probably for that and then it's a training for some people. These long-term jobs probably for that and then it's a training for some people that would be maintenance and stuff too coming forward. Let alone figures at home, but it's a, it's a huge project, um. And beneficial for everybody, so we just went over the each department's reports.
Did you see, uh, Mark's comments? Safety meeting next Monday, they're asking for representation from all the departments or buildings at least.
No, I did not check it, thank you, that's what I got you there. Anything on next week's agenda? Looks, I mean, looks good to me. So, if there isn't anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
I have motion second to adjourn, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.